Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Kent City Council meeting for June 1st, 2021. Want to start with a reminder, this is a remote meeting due to the COVID proclamation from the governor. A live broadcast is available on Kent TV 21, as well as our Facebook page and the YouTube channel, which is also Kent TV 21. There is also a dial-in option for those wanting to listen to the meeting on the telephone. With that, we have called the meeting to order, and I'm going to turn it over to Kim to call the roll.
Mayor Ralph?
Here.
Council President Troutner?
Here.
Councilmember Boyce?
Here.
Councilmember Fincher?
Here.
Councilmember Cor?
Here.
Councilmember Larmour?
Here.
Councilmember Michelle?
Here.
Councilmember Thomas?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. The next item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. Are there any changes from council or administration?
No changes this evening, Mayor.
All right. Seeing none, a motion would be in order to approve the agenda as published.
Madam Mayor, I move to approve the agenda this evening.
Second.
Right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, and the agenda stands as written. Item number four on our agenda is public communications. We've got several items tonight. We are going to start with item number A1, and that is our Employee of the Month. So each month here at the city of Kent, our employees get together and nominate one of their coworkers for the honor of Employee of the Month for their outstanding work, whether it be on a specific project or just generally representing all of the values that we hold here at the city. So I am very proud to announce today that the June 2021 Employee of the Month is Kelly Finn. Kelly joined the city of Kent as a paralegal and policy analyst in the legal department in November of 2018. As the paralegal and policy analyst, Kelly is responsible for providing support for attorneys and providing a variety of paralegal administrative and policy work for the Office of the City Attorney and its civil division. Her duties include preparing complex specialized and confidential professional level projects that are usually expected under short deadlines. These often require extensive legal, technical, and administrative knowledge, skill, and attention to detail. It was noted in Kelly's nomination that she is truly a dedicated employee and puts the utmost thought and attention to detail in every task that she takes on. Her work product is always top quality, and she does it all with a smile. Her can-do attitude has been especially appreciated over the last year when the legal department has had to change how legal performs various aspects of work due to COVID-19. She consistently offers her unwavering support to the team and is always ready to jump onto a project, even if it's not a task that she is responsible for normally or would fall into her plate. She consistently seeks to expand her knowledge and experience so that she can become a bigger contributor to the legal work the office performs. Kelly took charge and managed the development and launch of Lawbase, a case management system for the civil division. This was a huge undertaking, but Kelly was happy to do it and help her team navigate their way through the development. Kelly continuously embraces our values, and we celebrate her as June's Employee of the Month. Let's everyone congratulate Kelly Finn on this recognition. She is an amazing employee and very dedicated to the work she does, and definitely deserving of this honor. All right, now we are going to move on to another type of recognition. We've got our legislative delegation here, so that we can say thank you for all of the amazing work that was completed this session in another place where the world turned upside down and had to be reimagined due to COVID. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Breonna Murray to do the honors.
Thank you, Mayor. It doesn't look like I have the capability to turn my video on, but while we work through that technical detail, I'll go ahead and get started. So Mayor, Council, I'm Breonna Murray with Gordon Thomas Honeywell Government Affairs. I am the city-state contract lobbyist. We are joined this evening by our legislators from the 33rd, the 47th, and the 11th. I encourage them all to turn their videos on at this time. I'm going to start with a brief overview of the legislative session, and then I will ask each of them to introduce themselves and mention one item that is their greatest success from this past legislative session. And I'd encourage them to be brief. There are nine of them in total. I don't think we have everyone. We have nine total, and I'll just start by saying it was a historic legislative session. Before I go any further, I also want to introduce Holly Cochi, who assists me in working with the city. The reason my video didn't work is probably because she wasn't here holding my hand. In this virtual legislative session, I relied very heavily on her in navigating all this technology. So just, I'm going to really briefly try and capture what was 105 days of action-packed virtual activity that culminated in what I would say is one of the most historic sessions, if not the most historic legislative sessions I've ever participated in. The 105-day legislature met in almost an entirely virtual format. The legislators that are joining us this evening have got to be drained out on Zoom. I know that I am. I'll note that every single one of them were very accessible to me as your advocate and made themselves available in this virtual format via Zoom, Teams, text, phone call, and really did a great job in navigating what's otherwise a tough environment. The legislature considered just over 1,000 different bills in this virtual format, and they passed 334 into law. They adopted biennial operating capital and transportation budgets that reflected some historic investments, particularly in the area of housing. The city's legislative priorities are quite broad. You all set priorities that range anywhere from equity to affordable housing to state shared revenues. And I want to just take a moment before turning it over to each of our legislators to highlight some of our biggest successes from this session. The first is a multi-year effort, and I want to emphasize multi-year effort, to restore streamlined sales tax mitigation assistance funding and have it continued through 2026. As you all will recall, we thought we had got a bill across the finish line last legislative session, only to have the governor veto it in anticipation of a decline in revenues from the pandemic. So this session, we really were starting from scratch. I'm really pleased to share with you that Representative Entenmann's bill, House Bill 1521, did pass into law. The Senate companion of that bill was sponsored by Senator Doss. The bill went through the Senate Ways and Means Committee, which Senator Kaiser was instrumental in getting it through. The House Appropriations Committee, which Representative Gregerson serves a leadership role on. Senator Hasagawa was instrumental on the floor. And then, not here tonight, but also Representative Pat Sullivan, playing just an instrumental role in budget negotiations. And also Rep. Steve Berquist as well on the House Appropriations Committee. I'm sure I'm forgetting someone, but I want to emphasize what an excellent team effort it was on behalf of the entire legislative delegation in getting this great win through the legislature. The legislature's operating budget backfilled the payments that were vetoed. So the city will be receiving $3.6 million between now and June 30th to make up for the payments that were vetoed over the course of this past year. And then the payments will continue moving forward until 2026. Each year, the mitigation assistance payment is going to reduce by 20% from the previous year. And that is designed in that way, so that as time goes on, we become less reliant on this state funding, given the political lift that it is to get it approved. In addition to streamlined sales tax mitigation, the capital budget was the largest in state history, $3.9 billion. $2 million was allocated to the Panther Lake Community Park, which was our biggest request. $515,000 was allocated to a teaching and commercial kitchen. We saw significant investments through several different grant programs within that budget through the Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program. $213,000 was allocated to Kent Memorial Park. $3.3 million was allocated to the Downey Farmstead through Flood Plains by Design. $350,000 to Kent Memorial Park, this one through the Youth Athletic Facilities account. So just some significant investments. I would note that Representative Hackney serves as on that capital budget committee and new in that role, and just did an excellent, excellent job in advocating for the Kent community. I will leave my comments there. Those are our biggest successes. The one thing that's outstanding is a transportation revenue package. The city has expressed support for a revenue package, really appreciate the efforts of our legislators in getting Kent requested projects on the proposed project lists. We just need to get those project lists finalized and across the finish line. So with that, I will conclude by, I think what we'll do is we'll go in order of districts, starting first with Senators, and we'll do 47th, and then 33rd, and then 11th. So that means that we're going to be starting with Senator Doss. Senator Doss, if you want to introduce yourself and briefly pick one item that was your biggest success of this session. I know it's hard.
Good evening, everyone. Breonna knows me well enough to know that's really hard. You know, what I want to say is I think the success, so many, but the work that Rep. Entenmann did on a police accountability, the work that Rep. Orwell did on foreclosure assistance, the work that Rep. Gregg, I mean, I'm just so honored to be here with these amazing legislators that represent Kent, and I'm proud to be your colleague, and I thank you so much for your companionship, your camaraderie. It was a lot of work to get through this session, and you know, I know we all had each other's backs, and we, you know, really worked together to make sure Kent was represented well, and we got the budget items that we needed. And you know, I always shout out to Breonna, who is just one of the best lobbyists in Olympia. I just thank you. My biggest win was banning Styrofoam and other plastics bills for the state of Washington, and I'm just honored to represent Kent.
Great. Thank you, Senator. Rep. Entenmann, you're next.
Thank you, and thank you, Senator Doss, for your kind words. If, you know, answering the question about what I am most proud of, I have to say, it's the work that I have done in the Police Accountability Task Force in passing the legislation that will, sponsoring the legislation that will create the independent investigative body that was asked for by the governor, working with families from police accountability. It was historic. It is memorable, and it is something that, if I do nothing else in the legislature, and I am only remembered for this, this is a very proud moment for me. So thank you.
Good for, Senator Kaiser.
Thank you so much, Breonna, and I think you can tell that we work as a team. And you know, sometimes I want to have one city in one district, but I think Kent works even better when you have three different districts and this broad array of representatives and senators representing Kent, because you have many issues in the legislature, and we worked as a team to make real progress. The streamlined sales taxes, you know, Pat Sullivan has worked on that for years. This year, we got it across the finish line with Representative Entenmann. I worked with Representative Berquist on making sure that our unemployment insurance program premiums were not going to bankrupt small business, because the premiums were zooming up because of the high unemployment rates. So we've worked together across party lines and across district lines to get stuff done. My favorite bill, and this one is really, in particular, I hope, going to help Kent. It is my Health Equity Zones bill, where we're going to focus on communities, especially communities of color, that have disparate health outcomes, health outcomes whether it's COVID, or whether it's maternity and outcomes of birth, or whether it's diabetes. We need to do better, and I think we can focus in on a few local communities, put some resources in there. And one of those resources was the dental clinic, $1 million in the Kent Semar Dental Clinic. So I'll be hoping to work with Kent in the future on our Health Equity Zone bill.
Great. Thank you, Senator Kaiser. Rep. Orwell, you want to go next?
Good evening. I'm losing my voice a little bit, so I apologize. You know, I have amazing colleagues, and I'm just so proud of the work we've done. And thank you, Senator Doss, for your kind words. You had an amazing session. I think everyone on this phone had a, Zoom had an amazing session. And I just really appreciate our partnership. We all come together around Kent, and we really appreciate everyone, the mayor and everyone on the council. For me, probably the biggest bill I worked on this session and probably have ever worked on was the House Bill 1477, the 988 bill. At the federal level, there'll be a new three-digit number, 988, starting in July of 2022, that will be available when a person's experiencing a behavioral health crisis. And it's this extraordinary catalyst to really enhance and expand our behavioral health system, to really make sure we're supporting people that are in crisis, and we don't have systems that maybe cause more trauma. So I'm really proud of that. There's going to be a lot of work over the next two or three years to make sure that system's up and running. But again, I think it's probably the biggest change I've seen in my career working in behavioral health, is the opportunity we have. And I'm proud of the work we've done in Kent and the partnerships between that we're doing around the co-responder teams, which I think fit beautifully into the models we'll be looking at. So thank you.
Rep. Gregerson.
Thank you, and thanks again for the kind words, Senator Doss. You know, it's really hard to just have one, but because this is my first year really working on the budget, I feel like this is a real historic moment in time to really look at how to use our budget to be able to work on recovery and to do it differently. And you saw over a billion dollars are going to rental assistance, and that comes with so many different facets, whether it's helping those with, for legal assistance, helping those stay in their home, homeownership. And, you know, it's 1,100-page document full of spending that so much of it is going to help Kent and South King County, because we really focused on language that relies on racial equity. And I know that that's something that's so important to Kent and others, so.
Thank you. Senator Hasagawa.
So I think it's one of the most important things that has been flying under the radar screen actually is a bill that we got passed. There's this thing that the legislature has called Joint Legislative Audit and Review Committee. It goes by the acronym JLRK. And this auditing committee, they go into every state agency and program and do performance audits and make sure that they're, all these programs are acting with accurate legislative intent. So I think that this has the potential, because what we did was, we gave it an additional mission. It has to review all of these audits through a racial equity lens and do, make sure that all of our programs have equity built into them, you know, looking at diversity, equity, inclusion, that sort of thing. And it has the potential to really change the system, frankly. So it's a small bill, but I think it's a really crucial one that has the potential to change the system, and so that's the bill that I would call out. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, Senator Rep. Berquist.
My dad is driving right now, but he says, "Thank you for passing a really good budget grant, and that helps a lot of people." It was amazing.
Sounds great. Good job, and thank you for driving safely. Rep. Hackney, last but not least.
Very much for this opportunity and to get a chance to work with everyone in this, to help Kent and the other communities in South King County. I think that the work that I'm most proud of was my work on the Capital Budget Committee. We were able to get a $411 million investment in broadband in the capital budget. I think it was an opportunity to really attempt to address the problem at the scale of the problem, and I think it's going to make a big difference in bridging the digital divide. And it has, obviously, this pandemic has basically, you know, shown a spotlight on the fizzes and cracks in our social system, from everything from the need to telework, telemedicine, and teleeducation in times of public health disasters. It shows you how essential and much of a utility broadband is. So that work was my favorite.
So Mayor, Council, I present to you your 47th, 33rd, and 11th District legislators, with only one person missing, and that is Representative Pat Sullivan. He is a key member of the team, but collectively, these nine legislators have been your strong advocates throughout the legislative session. They, I want to emphasize again, always have an open phone line, text, anything that I need as your representative, and really have been hard at work over this last 105-day session advocating for the Kent community. So Mayor, I am going to turn it over to you.
Thank you, Breonna, and I want to also make sure that we say thank you to you and to Holly for all of your work in making sure that the communication between the city and our amazing representatives and senators happen. That's a huge task when there's so many things going on, so thank you, Breonna and Holly. Senator Kaiser, you said at the beginning of your comments that how fortunate Kent was to have the 33rd, the 11th, and the 47th, and I could not agree with you more. When I talk to my colleagues around the region and the state, and I let them know that Kent is lucky enough to have three LDs in our city, I think there's a little bit of envy, a little bit of jealousy, because it does mean that we've got experts and advocates in just about every single thing that impacts the city. So to all of you, from the bottom of my heart, thank you so much for the work that you do for the residents and businesses of the city of Kent. We could not, we couldn't navigate session or these systems without the work that you all do for us and your willingness to pick up the phone and take the time to meet. And it's not just during the session. I got a chance to meet with all of you before session, and we'll do the same thing through the interim for the work that you're doing all year round. Very, very grateful. Thank you for advocating for our city. Like I said, we couldn't do this work without you. It makes for a really good team. Thank you so very much. I am going to look to the council. Does anyone have any comments that they would like to make? So I will start with Councilmember Fincher, followed by Councilmember Cor.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. This was just a groundbreaking, groundbreaking year. The things that were passed are things that change people's lives, save people's lives. It is a year that, whether it be broadband, whether it be police reform, as you know, I was there for the plastic bandbag, so I love that the Styrofoam issue has come up and passed, but everything you guys did helped move us forward as a society, and I just really appreciate the hard work, because I know it was not easy. But you guys did and got it done. You hung in there, so thank you. Thank you all so very much.
Councilmember Cor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you to our amazing representatives and senators and Breonna and Holly. This was a tough year for everyone, but I applaud you and I appreciate each and every one of you, because you listened to our needs and you listened to the needs of the community during this crisis and made it happen in Olympia. I mean, such amazing progress we had. I appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. Continue doing the great work. Looking forward to connecting with you again.
Council President Troutner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to echo the words of my colleagues and just say good evening and hello to all of you. It's good to see you here. Thank you for all you do in Olympia and your commitment, but most importantly, thank you for your investment to Kent and to our community. It's greatly appreciated, and it was great to hear all of you say the favorite things that you're proud of. And I'm just looking forward to us all being able to see each other in person, and thank you personally, so I appreciate it.
Right. Councilmember Boyce.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to say, Representative Hackney talked about just this COVID and doing everything, all the work you have done through Zoom. It must have been a hard challenge to be able to do that and stay focused, and I just want to commend you for the hard work. And I heard the word "team" a lot, you know, amongst you guys, and I just want to say, hey, thank you for the hard work, and hopefully when we do the next session, you go back in person, at least have the option of going back in person and not through Zoom. So thank you.
Right. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you. Yeah, I think Bill just, I think, said it best, emphasizing team. I think in this time when politics can be so divisive, I just want to thank you all for modeling the value of teamwork and, you know, and I think there's no better representation than to see this amazing list of work that's come from everybody working together to push these priorities forward that are going to truly help people. So thank you for that. Thank you for your emphasis on Kent and everything that you do for us every day down there. So appreciate it very much.
And Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I can't believe it's been 22 years since Representative Kaiser and I were on the same committee. She didn't have much fun that year though, but I did. Anyway, hey, I just wanted to say thank you for restoring the streamlined sales tax. That was with all of you, and I tell you, I can't tell you how much, not just myself, but the entire council, the mayor, how much we really appreciate the work you guys did on that. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank all of you so much for your hard work this session. I'm especially appreciative of, of course, the sales tax, streamlined sales tax, but also of Panther Lake Park and Kent Memorial Park funding. Thank you so much. I really appreciate it.
All right. Thank you guys very, very much. The fact that we don't have to talk about SST, that's right, that is applause worthy.
Don't jinx us. Don't jinx us.
So I didn't just say that. That isn't a real thing, but yes, that's, fingers crossed, right? Amazing session. Thank you all so much. Look forward to working with you during the interim, and hopefully you'll get a chance to enjoy a little bit of this beautiful weather. But again, thank you so much for the work that you all do for the city of Kent. Very, very grateful.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Right. Okay, we are going to move on in our agenda. The next item on the agenda is recognition of a new neighborhood council. So joining us tonight from our communications team is Cassie Fowler.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The neighborhood program is just super excited to be recognizing Marbella as a registered neighborhood. Marbella is going to be the 51st neighborhood registered with the City of Kent Neighborhood Program, so very exciting. They encompass about 16 houses situated on 121st Place Southeast here in Kent. With the city slowly coming out of COVID, we're super With the city slowly coming out of COVID, we're super excited to have another neighborhood in the program as we roll out a refresh and get it back up to its full potential to better serve the residents. Special thank you to Carol Luther, who is representing the neighborhood on the call tonight. She is the HOA president. So thank you to her for her dedication to her neighbors and for working with me as we get her neighborhood registered.
All right. Thank you, Cassie, and thank you, Carol, for joining us on this call this evening. We are excited to welcome Marbella Neighborhood Council into our Neighborhood Council Program. And as you heard, we're going to be coming out of COVID and being able to restart some of those things that go along with our Neighborhood Council Program, hoping to get some of the Kent Walks programs underway, some of our Neighborhood Council training, and just work together as we go through, as we figure out what, you know, what it looks like on the other side of COVID. So welcome to the welcome to the Neighborhood Council Program and looking forward, Carol, to meeting you at some point in person and the rest of your neighbors. So thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Cor.
Just a quick question, Madam Mayor. Who do neighbors contact at this time to form a neighborhood council?
They can reach out to Cassie directly.
Thank you.
Or the mayor's office, so and we can make sure that they get routed. All right. The next item on our agenda is a proclamation. So we have a proclamation for Pride Month this evening. I will go ahead and read this. Whereas the month of June was designated Pride Month to honor the Stonewall Riots and is generally recognized as the catalyst of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual, or LGBTQIA+ rights movement. And whereas many residents, students, city employees, and business owners within this city who contribute to the enrichment of our city are part of the LGBTQIA+ community. And whereas Washington State and King County have led the nation in protecting the civil rights of our LGBTQIA+ neighbors, coworkers, friends, and family members. And whereas while further progress is needed, it is important to recognize and celebrate the substantial gains that have been achieved. And whereas the City of Kent, in partnership with communication and communication with residents, businesses, and schools, is dedicated to building an inclusive city with opportunities for all. And whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, and asexual residents contribute to the cultural fabric of our community and donate their time, talent, labor, and financial resources to various community organizations. And whereas in celebration of diversity and recognition of the LGBTQIA+ community, the pride flag will appear at Kent City Hall on June 14 through the 21st, 2021. Now therefore, I, Dana Ralph, Mayor of Kent, do hereby proclaim June 21st to be LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in Kent, Washington, and the Kent City Council and Mayor invites everyone to reflect on ways we can all live and work together with a commitment to mutual respect and understanding, and to join us in the special observance and recognize the numerous contributions of the LGBTQIA+ individuals in our city. We therefore proclaim June as Pride Month in the City of Kent. All right. With that, we will move on to community events. Council President Troutner, do you have any community events?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one to share. We have another summer recycling event coming up this Saturday from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. at the Kent Phoenix Academy. So if you're still doing some spring cleaning, make sure you check that out. More information is available at kentwa.gov/talkingtrash. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This coming Saturday is the June, is the Kent International Festival, so this Saturday, the 5th, the Kent International Festival is going to be held virtually, so that will be online. And on June 19th is the Juneteenth Celebration, which will also be online, with the exception, they will be providing a meal, so there's about a two-hour window. More information on that to come, but look for that, June 19th, now that it is an official state holiday. So that is it. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. And the City of Kent will be observing Juneteenth as a holiday this year, so the Friday before, I believe it's the 18th, the City of Kent, City Government will be closed in observation. All right. Any other community events? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item number five, which is reports. Opportunity for everyone to report out to the community about the work that's being done outside of the committee of the whole and the council meetings. I have a brief report this evening. PSRC Executive Committee met last week. We received a report out on the regional aviation baseline study. So looking at, the committee looked at the entire state and where there is opportunity for the possibility of larger airports or additional locations for an airport. C-TAC is growing extremely quickly and outgrowing its its space. It is landlocked, so just taking a baseline inventory of possible other regional airports and where they could be located. We also had an update on the regional housing strategy. Information informing the the housing component of PSRC's work was provided. The the other thing I'd like to talk about a little bit tonight is our lifeguard program at Lake Meridian. So I reported out a couple of weeks ago that we were having difficulty in recruiting lifeguards, as were most of the other jurisdictions around our area, a variety of reasons for that. We had been advertising on our social media, on in all of our our normal outreach ways. Also had an opportunity to do some interviews with our networks. Councilmember Boyce also, I believe, did an interview with with Channel 5, so we had story coverage on 4, 5, and 13 for sure. And we were not able to recruit the 16 to 20 lifeguards that we need to staff that lifeguard program. So we will be canceling the lifeguarding program this year at Lake Meridian. I can promise it is not for lack of trying, and it's not just a City of Kent issue. It's it is, like I said, around the area for a variety of reasons, COVID being the the largest reason. The funding is there. It will remain there. We will have a lifeguard program next year, because we're going to be out of the pandemic, and we're not going to be having these same challenges. But just wanted to let everyone know, we will be doing additional, some additional, putting some additional information out regarding water safety, swimming safety. We will have extra signage out at the lake, just not able to have lifeguards this year. With that, I will end my report and turn it over to our Chief Administrative Officer, Derek Matheson.
All right. Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, council members. Council committees, of course, return in September, and the council president has finalized committee appointments. I won't run through that list, but it is available in the city council packet. And as we start to get closer to September, we'll talk about that more through our social media channels. The committee chairs are going to work with their members and with department directors to finalize the meeting days and times, but it's looking pretty likely that all of the committees will be meeting on Mondays at 4:00 p.m., with the exception of the Operations and Public Safety Committee that will meet before council workshops at 4:00 p.m. on the first and third Tuesdays. Speaking of committees, the council created an ad hoc American Rescue Plan Act Committee back in April. That group has now met three times and finished its work, and will present that to the full city council next week at your committee of the whole meeting. Also wanted to note that our interim Equity Manager, Uriel Varela, gave a presentation on our Emerging Equity Strategic Plan to the Kent Ministerial Association during that group's monthly meeting. The group had good questions and requested another update on our work later this year. So we continue to engage the community as we put that plan together. The rest of my written report is, of course, in the packet, and happy to share that we have no executive session on this nice summer evening. So thank you much.
All right. Thank you, Derek. I will turn it over now to Council President Troutner.
And thank you, Madam Mayor. We had a workshop earlier this evening with two presentations. The first was on transportation sustainability update. We went over many of the projects that have been completed, 212th overlay, which is by the Wynn Co., East Valley at 196 to 180th, the southeast 208th overlay, and of course, one of my favorites is the 224th, first and second phase overpass. We also talked about future projects, so this summer, you'll be seeing lots of our crews out there doing overlays in neighborhoods, pavement repairs, crack seal work. They're going to be working on some sidewalks, some connections and repairs, line striping and guardrail repairs. Also, through the American Disabilities Act Plan, there's going to be improvements to public right-of-way, which includes improvements to our signals. Some of the countdowns will be improved, also timers and push buttons. So you'll see lots of good things by our Public Works Crew throughout the summer. We also talked about the ordinance for boards and commissioners as we update that. We're going to continue that conversation, but we are looking at the roles of our boards and commissioners, the responsibilities. Most of those are appointed by the mayor and also confirmed by council. We looked at qualifications and what alternate members' roles are and which boards we will have those on. We talked a little bit about term limits, but we're going to go back and discuss that at a future meeting. So more to come on that and lots of discussion by council. And just a reminder that all of our workshops are available, so if you want to go back and take a look at any of those presentations, I highly recommend it. I also sit on the Regional Law, Safety, and Justice Committee. At our last meeting on Thursday, we talked about the new legislation that has come about with and the impacts that will have on our justice system, something that we also talked about at our council retreat in May and will be bringing to the public shortly. We had our Regional Transit Committee meeting, where we continued to talk about policy changes and updates. And then Terry White, who's the interim general manager for Metro, presented some really good information that I wanted to share. Starting today, actually, June 1st, for a period of time, ORCA cards will be free to our youth ages 6 to 18. So they will be available to at no charge. And then after that, they'll be able to reload those cards, but it'll give them easy access and ability to reach different destinations across the region. Also, it used to be that you could only use a debit card or a credit card to load your transit ticket. Now we are, there's the availability to do that with cash, so it's a better experience for customers, and it gives people that might not have a bank account or credit card the ability to load their transit card. And then there's also going to be updates on safety, security, and fair enforcement through a new initiative. There's a plan to work through that process to reimagine safety and security and making sure that we're enforcing those fair enforcement practices and making sure that the ride is a good experience for both the drivers and people using the transit system. And with that, I am going to turn to my colleagues and see what they have been up to, and I'm going to start this evening with Councilmember Michelle.
Thank you, Council President. This past week, I had my conversations with council. Thank you, Councilmember Larmour, for showing up. It's a good opportunity to get, address in-depth concerns as there wasn't very much attendance, but that's okay. I also handed out masks with my son at Kent Station, and Smith Brothers Farm was there, also giving out chocolate milk, and that was a lot of fun. Okay, what else? Oh, I was on the Community Police Academy, and we heard from Officer Roush in the SWAT. He's on the SWAT, the Valley SWAT team. And we got to see the K-9 officer go forth with K-9 cane, so that was fun. And then we had our last meeting this past week, and we heard from the detective unit, Detective Whitley, and then also from the digital forensics person, Detective Waldo. And Chief Padilla made a guest appearance, and he even dressed up in a suit for us so we could have our graduation, where everyone said what their favorite part of the academy was, and some standout things were the chaplaincy program, the human trafficking program. A lot of people really enjoyed hearing about that, and gangs and graffiti, and of course, everyone's favorite K-9. And I just want to say thank you to Sarah Woods and Sergeant Kelso for organizing the community police program. Okay, one more thing. All right, I serve on the Human Services Commission here in Kent, and we had two presentations. One was from Kathy Powers of Orion Industries, and they do an apprenticeship program. They have job training, education, and mentoring, and they focus mostly on disabilities and those who are disadvantaged. So that includes like mental health issues and substance abuse issues, or even people who have gone through the criminal justice system and need additional assistance. And we also heard from World Relief Seattle, and they talked about the Hilltop Gardens, which is a really cool project, and so we got a really great overview of that. So if you haven't seen it, you should go check it out. It's really quite the accomplishment. And then the last thing that we talked about was the CDBG coronavirus funds. This is round three. We're getting about $687,000. And the community, there's a couple of community members and Human Services Commission member who are going to look over the applications for that and figure out which organizations get those back funding. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Michelle. Councilmember Cor.
Thank you. I sit on Growth Management Planning Council with King County. We had our meeting on Wednesday. We are still talking about countywide planning policies, and I want to point out that we did have public comment, and as mayors of South King County cities submitted public comment to make some adjustments to how affordable housing is appropriated to cities. So we did have discussion on that, and we, I plan on making a motion, sending a motion into King County staff, and because we did have some support from SCA caucus members, and I'll be reaching out to the rest of them to try to get more support on the letter that was sent. If you don't know what I'm talking about, it was a letter that our mayor and mayors of some South King County cities here signed, about making sure that affordable housing, when they're talking about affordable housing percentages, keeping in mind that it's, keep, our South King County cities have a stock of affordable housing already. So we need to take that in consideration and making sure that east county, east side of King County is also, and north is also, being held accountable for their percentages in affordable housing. I'll be working on that motion with Haley and sending that in for King County Council so we can hopefully get that, even if we don't, you know, we put that in their minds so they're thinking about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Cor. Councilmember Larmour.
Thank you. So actually, this is a good segue, Councilmember Cor, because I sit on the Affordable Housing Committee, and we met in May at our, at our May meeting. One of the top subjects that we discussed was the unveiling of the new Affordable Housing Committee Dashboard. And part of what this dashboard makes available are affordable housing metrics and numbers by region and by jurisdiction. So hopefully, part of the accountability of the other cities that don't have the stock we do and need to build a stock is, you know, hopefully, that'll be reflected there in the dashboard. And I wanted to share the Earl out with the public. Unfortunately, it's a really long web address, so I would say the best way to find it is just Google "King County Affordable Housing Dashboard," and that should bring you to the kingcounty.gov site and get you through the, get you through to the dashboard. From there, you can filter down by jurisdiction. You can see how many affordable units Bellevue has today, that Kent has today. The one thing that was shared, the, some of the feelings by the South King County representatives is that it doesn't well reflect preservation efforts. So that was a comment that we forwarded to staff to figure out if there's a way to also better account for the units that we have that need to be preserved, because right now, the the metrics that are easier for them to pull into that dashboard are primarily on units to be built. But like Councilmember Cor said, for for certain jurisdictions, that's an important measure for them, where we in this house need to have more that we just need to preserve. The other agenda topic in the May meeting was we set and approved our federal legislation, legislative priorities. Nothing, you know, surprising there that we submitted support for the American Jobs Plan, has a considerable amount of CDBG funding. Plan, has a considerable amount of CDBG funding, and then also asking the federal government to fully, for the, fully fund the National Housing Trust Fund. This is an important funding tool that has historically never been fully funded. It's always been underfunded, and what I like about this tool for Kent specifically is it, it gives the leeway for not just construction, but also preservation. So that's, that'd be great to see that hopefully funded federally. And that ends my report this week.
Thank you, Councilmember Larmour. Councilmember Voice.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm the vice chair of PEC for Sound City Association. Our last meeting was mid-April, and we took the month of May off. So we're going to get started again here a week from Wednesday, tomorrow. So let's say thank to my peers for continuing to carry weight for the city, and I look forward to doing my part after our next meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Voice. Councilmember Thomas.
Thank you, Madam President. I serve on the Regional Fire Authority, and, Peter Sound Regional Fire Authority, that is, and that is along with, of course, our, our, our president, Tony Troutner, and our council member, Bill Voice. So our agenda items have been actually a little bit light this last week, last month, although we did have two fires last week. So tomorrow night is also a very light agenda as we go on virtually at 5:30. If you'd like to be a part of that, you can call the fire department, and Jessica or anybody there could help you at (253) 856-4300. So (253) 856-4300. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember Thomas. Councilmember Fincher.
Thank you, Madam Chair. King Conservation District will be going through a reorganization. So the organization was top-heavy, so getting rid of four director positions. The staff and union are working together to disseminate responsibilities, and the organization should run much better, much smoother. Mid Mental, and KCD is King Conservation District, Mid Mental Illness and Drug Dependency Advisory Committee will meet next Thursday on the 10th. So we basically put two meetings together, last month's meeting and this month's meeting, which is the reason for a different meeting date. So that's going to happen on the 10th at noon. And then Arts Commission, Arts Commission will be having the Summer Concert Series. It's all lined up. You can go online and see what the schedule are. There's a series of 12 concerts. Some of those will be Wednesday afternoons at Morrel Meadows Park. Other ones will be at 7:30 at Kent Memorial, at Lake Meridian Park on the Thursday evenings. And so good entertainment, people are getting back outside again, and those concerts are July and August. So other good things going on, hope floats is still the, the theme that is out through the end of the month. You, through the end of this month, you can put your, your entries of whatever you consider art. You can post those on Kent Creates and see if you're one of the five lucky winners to get those $200 stipends. That is it for now.
Thank you, Councilmember Fincher. Madam Mayor, that ends our reports.
Right. Thank you very much. Really appreciate how engaged all of our elected officials in the city of Kent are in the region. It makes a difference that our voice is being heard at all of these various tables. All right, we will move on to, in our agenda, item number six is public hearing. We do not have one this evening. Item number seven is public comment. I want to remind everyone that the public comment period is an opportunity to speak to the council and mayor on issues that relate to the business of the city of Kent or agenda items council will consider at this meeting. Comments do not, that do not relate to the business of the city are not permitted. Additionally, the state of Washington prohibits people from using this public comment period to support or oppose a ballot measure or a candidate for office. I would like to ask that our speakers start by, by stating their name and city of residence for the record, and as a reminder, you have three minutes for your comments. Kim, can you call our speakers, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have three people signed up to speak. The first speaker is Ishbel Dickens.
Good evening, Mayor Ralph, and Council President Troutner, and members of the Kent City Council. My name is Ishbel Dickens. I live in Seattle, and I've been working with manufactured homeowners for more than 30 years as a volunteer, a community organizer, a legal aid attorney, the executive director of the National Manufactured Homeowners Association, and now I'm retired and I'm back volunteering again with the Association of Manufactured Homeowners, AMO. Thank you for the opportunity to comment publicly this evening on the great work your staff, specifically Haley Von Steele, did when presenting at the Planning Commission meeting on the BERC recommendations and strategies to help Kent's 5,000 citizens who reside in your 26 manufactured housing communities. I submitted written comments on behalf of AMO to the Planning Commission in time for their May 10 hearing, and I believe these comments have been entered into the record. I was able to listen to the Planning Committee hearing and to the comments of two gentlemen from the manufactured housing community, communities of Washington, the Park Owners Trade Association. They continue to ask for incentives to run their highly profitable businesses and to be allowed to build new manufactured housing communities, implying that this would provide more affordable housing. You should know that a recent study by the Department of Commerce found that no new manufactured housing communities are being built anywhere in the country, but that most jurisdictions are doing what they can to preserve existing manufactured housing communities. This makes sense. It's always cheaper to preserve than to build new, and in addition, preserving existing neighborhoods and providing a diversity of housing for all economic sectors are important GMA criteria. AMO strongly supports manufactured housing community preservation, especially by nonprofit housing agencies, housing authorities, land trusts, or resident co-ops. In addition, please note that manufactured housing community owners do not provide affordable housing. They simply provide a space upon which low-income households, seniors, and others place their own homes. Unfortunately, ever-increasing rents often result in economic eviction, and/or these homeowners may be displaced due to the land under their homes being sold for other purposes. I urge you to read the comments submitted by AMO and to do everything you can to preserve the 26 manufactured housing communities in Kent, and to encourage the sale of these communities to non-profit entities that the landlord considers selling. And also, I'd like to give a shout out to all of your great representatives that were on the call earlier. They have been amazing champions in Olympia, supporting manufactured homeowner issues for years. And finally, if I'm more than happy to work with your staff as, as they move forward through these strategies, and if any of you get any calls from constituents with manufactured homeowner concerns, please have them contact the Association of Manufactured Homeowners. This organization is a statewide homeowners association and is ready to help. Thank you so much for all you do for your citizens in Kent, and I appreciate the time that you've given me today. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I could just make a quick comment?
Yes, please.
So first of all, I want to thank you so much for your comments and for being here tonight. We are adopting a plan via consent. This is an important milestone to be able to address this issue that you talk about. The city council looks forward to working with you and other stakeholders as we move forward. So thank you so much for being here and speaking up and providing your comments. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your support and help. I appreciate that. All right, Kim, can you call our next speaker, please?
The next speaker is Lindsay Young.
I'm Brian Gilderoy. Gilderoy is not going to be here this evening. I just wanted to let you guys know. I'm calling on behalf of the city workers of Kent. I live in Kent, Washington. I'm a grocery worker, and I'm asking for you guys to help to get this house repaid. We have been going to every council meeting, meeting with council people, and we thank you guys for your time. Right now, you guys are saying that the COVID's ending, but the end of the month, it's not going to be ending. The president has just announced the American Rescue Plan for people that are experiencing COVID stuff after the June 30th, because COVID's not ending. We're begging you guys for help. All grocery workers and frontline workers deserve this. Our question is, why are six other stores gonna, uh, cities gonna get it, but Kent can't? That's our question. So we beg and plead with you guys for help, and we appreciate your time. Thank you so much. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Lindsay. Councilmember Thomas. You're on mute.
I see it. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sorry about that. Lindsay, is it true that Fred Meyer is offering $100 for anyone who gets their vaccination?
They offered us $100, but they're putting most of it towards a gift card, so all the money goes right back in the company's pocket. It's not helping family members, it's not helping childcare services, it's not helping grocery store workers.
But it, but it could provide for food and clothing, for example.
Right, but that doesn't pay childcare when your child's not going to school because they're still in remote learning.
Oh, I understand. I just say you could use it one place or the other, but, okay. Thank you, Lindsay. Thank you.
Thank you. Kim, our next speaker, please.
So Mayor, I will call on Brian Gilderoy. There, I don't have him identified as a participant, but there is somebody that's in the meeting that isn't identified. So Brian, if you are in the meeting, you can go ahead. All right, Mayor, it doesn't look like we have anybody else signed up to speak.
All right. Thank you, Kim. We will move on in the agenda to our consent calendar. This is a compilation of items that council has received presentations on and had conversation around that have moved out of the committee of the whole meetings without controversy. Looks like tonight we have items A through K on the consent calendar. Council President, is there a motion to accept?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move to accept consent calendar items A through K.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, motion carries, seven, zero, consent calendar passes. Thank you very much. Item number nine this evening, we do have other, other business, and it is regarding a mulch donation. So we've got Chad Behren, our Public Works Director, here to give the presentation and ask for council, council's approval of this donation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is a first for me, and I'll explain the other business part of this here in a minute, but we actually have an offer of a donation of mulch, as the mayor pointed out, from Keywit, who is the contractor for the Federal Way Link Extension, operating on behalf of Sound Transit. They have a number of trees that were removed for the project, which they've turned into bark mulch, and they have offered it to the city free of charge, delivered where we need it, which is very rare. We don't get that much bark mulch out of projects in general, but large projects like Federal Way Link Extension can generate a fair number of mulch. And so as pointed out in the packet, they've offered up to 30,000 yards, I believe it is, 30,000 to 40,000 yards of mulch. We think we can use about 11,000 yards on public works projects, and in coordinating with the Parks Department, we think they can use also some significant yardage. It sounds like a light item, like, and something that should be easy, but it's council's prerogative to take donations of any size. We think this could have a value of up to $400,000 or $500,000, depending on how much of this mulch we take, because mulch is actually fairly expensive when you buy it on the market. So we're excited to have the opportunity to, to move forward with this. Again, it's something we need to bring to council because it's a donation of a significant value. And also, sorry about the timing. This is something we would typically bring to committee of the whole. However, we're, we've been invited to move at the speed of business, which is, Keywit just brought this to our attention at the end of the week before last, about 10 days ago, and say, we really need to get rid of this stuff. If you guys can take it, it's yours. So with that, I don't have any fancy pictures. It's basically a big pile of bark mulch that they're going to deliver where we need it if council's willing to accept it.
Right. Thank you, Chad. Council, any questions for Chad? All right, so, Councilmember Fincher, do you have a question?
No questions, just a comment. I know public works uses mulch, but having volunteered, as a number of my fellow council members have, on a number of park projects where we're trying to spread bark over the cardboard for, for control of weeds and all, and being able to save $400,000 to $500,000 makes sense to me. And I know that this does not come along as the first time I've heard of us getting this. So I was quite pleased when I read this in the agenda, so it's something that I hope we approve.
Definitely. Yeah, it's a, it's a rather sizable donation and something that we can certainly use. All right, with that, if there's no other questions, council, is there a motion?
I have a motion, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the mayor to take all actions necessary to accept a donation of wood chip mulch from Sound Transit's contractor, Keywit, and sign any necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion carries. There is the acceptance of about $400,000 worth of mulch for our parks and public work systems. Okay, item number 10 is bids. We've got one bid this evening, the 2021 Crack Sealing Bid Award, and giving this presentation will be Chad once again.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, we talked about this earlier during the council workshop. One of the items that we do every year in order to maintain the roads is seal cracks. It's basically putting tar in, in cracks, as pictured on the left and on the right. Annual bid, we've been doing this since the BNO was, tax was instituted back in 2013. This year for 2021, next slide, please, Kim. We're concentrating on some roads in the valley, and then a few up on the east hill. Have a little bid from Hazinga Enterprises for $147,200. They've done this work for us in the past and done a good job, and they came in well under the engineer's estimate of $223,000. So that's it, and any questions?
All right, any questions for Chad? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to award the 2021 Crack Sealing Project to Hazinga Enterprises LLC in the amount of $147,200, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents subject to final terms and conditions acceptable to the city attorney and public works director.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, motion carries, seven, zero. Item number 11 on our agenda is the exec, is an executive session. We do not have one this evening. That brings us to the end of our meeting. It is still very nice and light out, still warm, so have a chance to go out and take a walk or enjoy your family this evening. Want to thank everyone for joining us for the council meeting this evening. Again, thank you to our legislators for all the work that they have done for the city of Kent this last session. And with that, we are adjourned.